Whoops, we were recessed from Tuesday. We're going to reopen with our budget meeting this morning. And we do have Mr. Anderson online, so we do have a quorum. I don't know. So Jen, I'll leave it up to you to open and get started. I am lost in space.
There we go.
Getting in your steps. Sign back into Smart Sheets.
Okay. Good morning.
Good to see you.
Good to see you too. Um, so just a brief outline of what we have going forward today. Noxious weed will be first up. About eight forty-five or so, and they're scheduled for fifteen minutes. Then economic development will come in at nine. Then we will go through with economic development. There's multiple funds. Fund one nineteen, the Economic Development Fund, the Natural Resources Fund, the Affordable Housing Fund, and tourism. And then the Board of County Commissioners Funds and Departments. There are eight budgets there to go over. HR and Administrative Services at ten, and then planning to finish this off at ten thirty. At this, um, up to this point, the last directive that I had from the board was, we'll go through these. If there's anything that the board has or questions, then, you know, now would be the time for that. But the board had opened up and was allowing me to see if I can come up with solutions for the remainder of the budget. And as I'm working through the supplemental, I'll be able to start that after I get through the supplemental.
Just a little bit going on.
Yes, I will. And, you know, in order to go forward, I need to see how we're have an understanding how we're going to finish this year out. And the supplemental will be that key indicator of that. Did the board have anything for me this morning?
I do not. Mr. Anderson, do you have anything for Jen?
No, I've made it to the her all my thoughts.
Did you receive an email?
I Commissioner Anderson had called me yesterday to discuss the the budgets here. So I do, I do know where he sits throughout the day in case.
Communications.
Well, in cases microphone is interrupting again, then I'll be able to I'll be able to probably fill in a little bit there.
That works. So I was just looking forward to, they're pretty simple. I was looking to just going through them.
Yeah, yes, these ones are fairly straightforward and pretty simple. The board's already brought Richard in at one point in time and discussing that open position and already made moves with that open position to take it from a full-time FTE to a half. Beyond, beyond that, I don't, I don't see much in that budget. A lot of it's case a P to point oh nine dollars anyway, so. Then everybody else weeds dollars are restricted and of course, some of the funds with the commissioners landfill gas, I mean, those are restricted and they have agreements attached to them. There's not a lot going on in there. I think the key for me today would be to get a firm understanding between Richard and the board of what's happening in any community action projects planned for twenty twenty-five and as well as case of Pita dollars, because at this point in time, I do not believe that those are budgeted in Fund one twenty-five. So I think we need to true that up.
Okay.
Specifically to the airport, for sure. Outside of that, this will be Scott's first workshop. And he meets with you guys every week, so I'm sure there's no surprises in that budget at all.
Been great.
We can pick on him, can't we?
Not too much.
Thanks for pointing that out.
This is your second shop? Or is your first?
Me?
No. For Nathan. First, oh, see, I, yeah, I think you can't, yeah, I was, your timing last year, so so it'll be Nathan's first time too. I promise, I only gave you fifteen minutes, I promise. Yeah, I figured as much. Um, but if if you want to go, I think we're
Yeah, I'm ready.
Yeah.
Good morning.
Morning. For a major for and what a years man, quite a eye opener for things I didn't even know existed. That I had no idea about enjoying really learning this year, so.
Yeah, you go all kinds of places.
I do. I did not realize the west side gets forty-five inches of rain and the east side gets six inches of rain.
Crazy, isn't it?
And the diversity in the county. So it's, it's an amazing county we live in and it's a fun county to work in, so and quite a diversity in population too.
And you've met a lot of dogs.
Oh, yes, yes.
He met mine yesterday or day before, yeah.
Yep, I did meet your, your dog and he's quite a nice little dog, follows me around, so.
He just is helpful.
Anyway, I just got a short little page here to read. It's the same page that gets read every year, just a few little updates. This is to the Clickitat County Board of Commissioners and Public, twenty twenty-five Bozal, uh, proposed budget. Fund one seventeen, Department Noxious Weed Control. This is just a brief overview to combat and limit economic loss due to the presence and spread of noxious weeds. In nineteen sixty-nine, Washington State enacted RCW seventeen-ten. Noxious Weed Control Board. In accordance with the law, the Clickitac County Noxious Weed Control Board was activated by the Board of County Commissioners in April of nineteen seventy-six, composed of five volunteer directors from five different areas of the county. Currently, we have a full functioning board with a director from each of the five different districts. The function of the Weed Board is to act as a local governing body administering Washington weed law. Our mission is to protect Clickitac County lands and natural resources from the degrading impact of noxious weeds. We work with landowners and various agencies to control noxious weeds by providing free consultation and services at cost and availability. Twenty twenty-four successes include continued collaboration with county, state, and federal partners. In addition to our work with governmental partners, we responded to inquiries for identification, provided recommendations and treatment of noxious weeds from residents in all corners of the county. The Noxious Weed Control Board is funded through a land assessment levy levied against county landowners that should be provided a product that should provide approximately a hundred and ninety-six thousand four hundred dollars. The assessment is not a tax. The assessment is a regulatory fee that cannot be imposed selectively. In addition to the assessment, there are miscellaneous noxious weed control projects that can and do generate an estimated thirty-seven thousand two hundred dollars. BPA, Corps of Engineers, and other miscellaneous contracts generate seven thousand two hundred dollars. The United States Forest Service, twenty thousand dollars. The Road Department, two thousand dollars, and private contracts, eight thousand dollars. The Noxious Weed Control Board expenses are directly controlled by the revenue generated. We do not spend more than we generate. Any increase or decrease in the Weed Board budget budget are due to annual revenue generated, which are generally stable but can vary slightly from year to year. Our proposed twenty twenty-five budget is balanced reflecting budgeted hours for a weed technician for seasonal assistance. The weed, the Board of County Commissioners are responsible for ensuring the levy assessment funds are used judiciously as it is public funding, so their oversight in approving our budget is an important function. In twenty twenty-five, we will continue to monitor problem areas and work with the public by federal and state and local agencies in the education and eradication of noxious weeds. So that's it in a nutshell. Are there any questions? We do have more contracts coming in. The Forest Service with the burn up there on the Gifford Pinot this year has contacted me about increasing our funding and our presence up there with noxious weed control this year, so we're working with them. The Army Corps of Engineers are worried about what's going on along the rivers with the different weeds, so they're wanting to work more with us as well and work more on on a grant system too to increase our funding there, so. It's, it's interesting I, how, how I'm going to get all done. I have no idea, but we'll, we'll figure it out.
That's good. Never ending. It seems like you think they're gone and you go out there, there they are again.
There, there they are. And, you know, it's, it's interesting, because I mean, we, we, you know, we, we can't, we, we always have to be in the black. We, we can't be in red, so the more money we generate, the more, more work we can do. It just shows that we can do more work, so.
That helps.
And we're never short on work.
I can caution you, Clickitat, when I first moved to the Clickitat, it was spring, and I went and picked every wildflower there was. It was beautiful sitting on my table, and then I noted every single one of those turned into some kind of sticker bush. They're great in the spring and then nope.
Yes, they are.
It's tough out there.
It's very.
A lot of really mean ones.
Yes.
Yeah, that and star sithol. You try to pick it off your sock and it gets in your fingers, and you try to do these fingers and it gets in this finger. It's like, it's vicious.
Yes, and we're getting a whole new one in, where, you know, rush skeleton weed is going, I'm getting bombarded with rush skeleton weed calls and tree of heaven calls right now, and then I sprained down along the river yesterday and I was noticing a lot of Japanese knotweed that I didn't notice earlier this spring coming in. So we're going to be working on that too. We're making notes and taking reference points for that too, so. Never ending, so are there any, any questions from anyone else on anything or anything that needs my attention where I need to put more emphasis on?
Don't ask.
If there's issues, I need to take care of them. I'll do it, so.
All right, well, thank you.
All right.
Okay.
You all have a good day.
Good morning. I attended the White Salmon City Council meeting last night, and they were doing budgets. So it was very interesting to see how they function and the things they talk about.
They have as much fun as we do.
Now they're very serious. They don't have a bunny.
I had all intentions of calling into that council meeting last night, but my car got done very late, and so it was like at the end of the day and rush hour and all of that kind of stuff, and then with getting up, you know, the time that I need to to get here, usually get to bed by eight.
You know, their budget is pretty focused and when you look at ours and theirs, so not a lot of controversy. Pretty normal. The one thing they were doing is they're adding a planning director. They're going to hire a planner. They're not going to use consultants any longer. I think that's a good thing. Yeah, city, city of White Salmon. Yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah, don't tell them. Nah, I think he likes his job. Good morning. Do you want Richard to start early or are we going to wait because of? Okay, okay. I just didn't know about the public.
I'm glad you got up on the big screen, because I was trying to print this up and I could not figure out where I could read it accurately. Oh, okay. Well, I was messing around with it for like last couple of days, being like, how do I, and then I was trying to copy paste onto a normal Excel and I couldn't, I just couldn't figure it out. I'll get better with Smart Sheets.
Good morning. Are you ready to go? Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, perfect.
So.
Okay, yeah, so for, for one nineteen, is basically the same thing status quo as the last couple of years that that we've done, not nothing, nothing's really changed at all, so. Pretty much the exact same thing we did last year. One thing that I would like to kind of state is the way the wages are broken down. So from, so we have the expenses that are put up. I guess two things that are up there that we have, that we've always had, that you can kind of mess around with. Some of the travel is dictated by the ADO grant that that the county has, so we have, we are by contract, we go to wherever they choose. Sometimes it's Wenatchee or Spokane or Seattle for a few days, a couple of times a year to go meet with Commerce, but we have our two tourism grants up on the top at ten thousand dollars apiece. And then we have a gorge guide magazine advertising for thirty-five hundred dollars. So there's a few different advertising efforts that the county, that the Economic Development Department has traditionally had the last ten, fifteen years, and that includes gorge guide magazine and just the gorge magazine, and they've been increasing their costs. One, one thing that I would note on that budget is, is I might, I'm going to be trying to request next year, depending on how the lodging tax goes, on where that thirty-five hundred dollars goes, that gorge guide magazine, that advertising piece. One, one piece of it is that that magazine, we're on the very back page, but it's I, I don't know what the ROI is on that, if that makes sense, but what I do know is the signage, we have two signage spots, one out there on Highway fourteen and then one down there, one right next to Goldendale and one down by Highway fourteen, and I've had a lot of, a lot of people come into the office asking about doing that signage, which is about four thousand dollars. And I've had, I mean, I've seen Facebook posts with a lot of engagement on, on just the, on just those two pieces, so I was hoping to keep that, and then maybe in the following years, if we need to hack that off, that advertising piece, that's, that would be doable. Yeah, and then so that's what I'll be looking at, but I won't know until lodging tax comes around in January to see how they, do we take it out of the gorge guide magazine, Fund one nineteen? Do we take it out of, I think it's one twenty-three, off the top of my head, the lodging tax piece. I'm just, I'm just not sure when January comes around. Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll keep contact with Tamara, because she, she's the one that's, that's going to be doing that piece. Outside of that, is there any questions on the expenses? I think it's pretty straightforward. I would, there, there's one other piece on this for the expenses, and this is a big change from last year, the professional services. The Fund one nineteen, yep, right there, professional services. That's super, super high. That's with the Integrated Planning Grant. And of that Integrated Planning Grant, fifteen thousand dollars is going to be used for staff wages to help facilitate that with the Department of Ecology. And so that, that's substantial. Historically speaking, I want to say that for a long time, there was like thirty thousand dollars set aside for that fund specifically, and I think it was last year, it was cut down to fifteen thousand dollars. The, the purpose of that line item right there is basically to utilize it for different development projects that need some free planning things to go on. So the, the last one we used was two years ago for the airport, we did a cultural one oh six, Cultural Resources Survey one oh six with the Department of Archaeology, of Archaeology and Historic Preservation. And that cost just shy of like ten thousand dollars. One that's going to be coming up that, that I would be requesting this next year is going to be with the different development projects that are being proposed down there at the aluminum site and doing some sort of economic impact study and, and what that would look like. Right now, I've, I've been talking with Central Washington University. They, they seem like a good neutral third party when it comes to economic impact studies on, on what that job creation looks like, housing needs that, that could potentially happen. And that's, that kind of coincides, for instance, with, with the pump storage project. So the pump storage project came out saying that they're going to spend three point three billion dollars out there, and they're at the very tail end of getting the historic, their, their programmatic agreement within their historic properties management plan. They're, they're getting to that point where they're, they're having regular consultation with the tribes, and that's, that's going to be likely kicking off in twenty twenty-six. So what does that look like locally? But that would be, again, something that I'm looking at next year, potentially using some of those funds right there. So moving down to tourism, we have tourism regular wages. That's going to start heating up again, especially as we have not been, we haven't really been receiving invoices, and so just like most years, we start hammering our local contracts to get those invoices in so that we can begin processing them. And then we're going to be looking at doing those meetings coming up here, and, and I think our first lodging tax meeting is going to be October thirty-first, that Chelsea set up and getting that moving. The advertising piece as well is going to be that six thousand, I can't really see six thousand six hundred fifty dollars. Nine hundred fifty. Yeah, that's, that's also some of the advertising that we use with gorge magazine and gorge guide magazine. And that can be a little confusing, because one is Judy and the other one is Jody, and I was getting them mixed up pretty frequently, but but that's what we have for that. And so we're going to start charging a lot more to the wages piece of that, and we haven't, we haven't really been needing to touch it this year, but we're going to start charging for that.
Can I back you up a little bit, just for those on Zoom? And speak to revenues a little bit for one eighteen, just so we can circle, just put a pin in that one, but I just wanted to highlight for you that the revenue for Fund one nineteen, the Economic Development Fund is mostly made up of grant and then point oh nine dollars. This year, there's no use of landfill dollars or general purpose dollars out of one nineteen.
And we, we, we try not to touch within the department, so just for the public's sake. So within the Department for Economic Development, I'm technically designated currently halftime economic development and halftime with natural resources. The only full-time person we have in economic development is one person, and she's covered underneath the grant with the Associate Development Organization Program with the Department of Commerce, and that's reimbursed on a quarterly basis. And, you know, ju- just to let everyone know, that, that grant is actually going to be increased from seventy-five thousand to eighty-five thousand dollars this, this upcoming next summer. So it'll start covering a portion of my wages as well. The rest of it is going to be point oh nine. And so we do have an SBDC person. We pay her halftime, so she's basically halftime here in Goldendale, halftime in Skamania County. But that also comes out of point oh nine. So those, and, and the point oh nine fund, that revenue fund can only be used by statute for either infrastructure projects benefiting the public or for, you know, economic development projects for infrastructure or for economic development staff wages typically. That, that, that's what those funds have been used for. So we can't really shift those point oh nine dollars for other uses.
Correct. Sorry, I just wanted to, you know, make sure, because you do have, and tourism brought it up that there, for me to go back to one nineteen. Revenue for tourism is the, the hotel motel transit tax and
And some other pieces on, because I was just going to be talking about the expenses before we got into revenues. So there's, so we also do lodging tax, and obviously we charge a small amount to lodging tax. And historically speaking, and this is something that due to budget constraints that we're, that we're starting to change our practices on, at least within the department. Traditionally, we haven't needed to charge staff time or staff wages on grant management or, or, you know, ensuring that, that certain funds that are given back by the state by, by RCWs and stuff. Typically, we haven't charged to that, but we're able to charge for it, and we're among the last. Where we're typically among the last in the state that, that start charging to it. So we're among the last in the state when we start charging, for instance, wages to the point oh nine, we were among the last to kind of adopt that practice. We have two other funds, so not just the lodging tax and where we can charge wages to, and that's a revenue source that comes back from the Department of Revenue at the state level, but we also have the Affordable Housing Advisory Board. We've never charged wages to it, and then we have upcoming the Affordable and Supportive Housing Dollars, point zero one with the MOU with the cities that we also don't, but technically you could argue that the management of those funds would require some amount of staff time. We just haven't, those are, those are not discussions that have crept up yet. So there are other opportunities for offsetting some of these costs, but I mean, for one nineteen and for natural resources, we're completely, we're pretty much completely funded by, by grants from the state, so.
For tourism impacts versus benefits, where are we benefiting at the county and what's it costing us? Because I think we have a lot going out that we're never getting it back. And I know it's great to invite tourism in, and I'm from a tourism family, so I need to be careful, but we have to look We have to look at those impacts to our county, I think. So at some time we'll have a longer conversation about what tourism looks like in the future for the county. But I have no questions on. The funding or.
Would, would we like to move forward to natural resources? So for natural resources, again, it's gonna be. That's also funded as the lead entity, so for the public's sake. By statute with the state, we, we have designated lead entities. Across the state that are in charge of salmon, various salmon restoration projects. Throughout the years with past employees, we, you know, that program has grown. And so we do things such as well monitoring, we, we just had some requests on well monitoring. And what certain wells look like with some different housing projects that are being proposed in the county. But basically that's funded through ecology, and that's gonna be seventy-five thousand dollars a year with, with a small. Grant match associated with that, so basically the county. Being designated the lead entity allows us to have that voice within natural resources. The lead entity, basically territorially speaking, it encompasses most of Clickback County and. You know, basically half of Benton County. Because it's within the same Water Resource Inventory Assessment RIA. So for, for ecology. But. But just like with the Integrated Planning Grant. There's other projects that also help offset staff wages, such, such as the Switzer Grant. And there's some other with the riparian funding. That's coming down with the state, the state has designated twenty-five million dollars for riparian funding. Either twenty or twenty-five million off the top of my head. And, and there's a number of. Number of new projects that we're looking at. At pursuing with the natural resources. For that, we just had a, a really great meeting with the Conservation Fund. They purchased thirty-one thousand acres here in the county, and they're very interested in. Not just doing something for economic development, but in some salmon restoration projects. And so what that looks like, how we can obtain some of that, and then that's. I mean. Theoretically that, I'm not sure how that's gonna flow, but we're still very early in the process, so. There's gonna be more of that next year.
Well, and. I think you need to be aware to moving into the comp plan and with our new planners. I see natural resources tying more and more to our planning. And using them in that way rather than new projects to build. Because we're gonna have to have that documentation. And numbers in order to build that comp plan, water availability. And all the questions that Scott will have about natural resources. So your view may change.
Yes. I've got some research to do. How that's gonna fit into the comp plan.
And just planning in general. I think planning, building and natural resources is a fit. Just for all the. Regulations and the burdens we have these days. You can produce some of their work for them, maybe.
So that's pretty much it for the expense report and the revenue. Again, you know, for the public's sake. The natural, when we say the Natural Resource Department is, is one. One person is Keaton, so Keaton is the guy that wears all the different hats. Is there anything else? All right.
No, not for me.
My kids know sign language, so I'm all done.
Thank you, Richard. Were you done, Jen? You didn't run. You didn't run past her. Oh, that was Jake. Can you get him back? I think somebody was talking.
No, I'm just saying thank you to Richard.
Thank you.
I mean, this is a combination of the commissioners with Richard, so. Richard, Richard, Richard. Yes, please. Please. I just wanna. I wanna wrap up. What needs will. Are gonna be needed in the twenty twenty-five budget for. Either community action projects or point oh nine dollars, because at this point, there's nothing. Budgeted.
Yeah, so that, so the point oh nine is a tough one, because part of that. So the, the point oh nine fund. When projects come in, we help reimburse those projects, traditionally, we've always used a grant. For that, and there's been recent proposals for a grant loan program and what that might look like. But the infrastructure project list must be approved before people submit their projects, and so. That doesn't get approved until January. And that's, part of that is predicated upon Maked, so. Again, for, for the public's sake and, and for anybody that doesn't know. Maked by why, it's, it's weird, Maked is a federal recognized. District. That encompasses Skamania County, Clickback County and five Oregon counties, and so they have what's called the SEDs. And it's called the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategies. And in order to obtain federal funding, you must be on that list, that is a hard line of this, not on the list. It's not considered of regional importance. The issue is the state does not recognize Maked. As a Washington entity. Maked is considered an Oregon entity, they cover five Oregon counties. And so for us with our countywide infrastructure project list that we do. Not only does a portion of that get selected for prioritization at the Maked level. But it also goes up to the state level, so whenever we're trying to, and it's not just us trying to obtain. Infrastructure grants, it's our three cities, it's the PUD, it's the port, it's the various school districts. Anyone, anyone that wants to obtain funding for infrastructure, if you're on that list, it, it's a very strong argument that it's already been identified. As, as a priority for the county, right, so. But that. Maked needs or says by March, and so we do ours in January, so that it feeds into that, and so that's kind of a timeline. Dictated process. We do have some asks that are gonna be done this next year. More specifically from, from the city of Goldendale. And, and the new incubator space that they have, that could be anywhere between fifty and a hundred thousand dollars.
So would you say that it would be safer to wait until the first supplemental to address any projects? Oh, fair enough.
Yeah, and that, and that's not me just being like.
No, I'm, I'm totally fine with that.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thanks, now I'm getting out of here.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure, is that the point oh nine, we're gonna do that in a supplemental as well for the airport, or are we gonna build that in?
Wait till the first supplemental, Jen says? It's the pickle in the room. It's got a good accent. Could have retired.
Yeah, too much trouble over there. To circle back on, on that question of whether we're gonna, we would want to. Budget now the point oh nine dollars for the airport project or, or wait. At this point in time, I would like to wait till I have a more clear understanding. As to how the money is flowing, I do know that the expense is budgeted in the capital.
No, it's not Heather, it's. It's wrong.
Now, if, if the agreements and the contracts and the awards. End up at my desk before, before that adoption of this budget, then. Okay, then I will add it in there and present it to the board. But till then, I, I feel pressing pause until I, I see where things are. Supposed to be flowing and have those agreements in place.
I appreciate that. Hey, so moving on to commissioners. Are you ready for commissioners, Jen?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, ready to go?
Are you ladies ready?
Oh, no, because I can't see from there. I have my close up, I have my mic here.
Okay, go for it.
Basically with commissioners, we've got Board of Equalization. That one is pretty cut and dry. We've just got the reimbursements for the expenses for. What gets paid when our board members are here taking action. That would fall under the, basically the professional services. Then we've got the office and operating supplies, those are pretty easy, everything's pretty cut and dry on that, nothing's changed. And then with the, with the commissioner's budget, everything is, you know, it's pretty much the same. Going down it, I'm looking, there is a small change in travel, I've just, you know, brought it down four hundred dollars. And. Then with the. With miscellaneous, so that was estimated. Okay, anyway. So, yeah, I mean, basically that was it with that.
Why did you make a decision to bring down the travel amount?
I just brought it down, this year's actual is really low.
I know.
And so I just thought to, to bring it down a little bit, and that way it. Not too much, but in, you know, a little bit.
Right.
Okay, it looks like it was budgeted with a. Very detailed number, and now it's just a whole number.
Yeah.
Probably just a rounding. Thing is what I would imagine.
If I recall from when you have two new commissioners coming in, usually your travel budget goes up for the first year, because. They go to a lot more meetings and a lot more trainings, so is that really a good idea to lower? Just have to have a supplemental later, it's up to you guys.
That would be good, if you don't mind.
Jake, did you end up making up for all of that first year travel and your second year? I don't remember.
Uh, I know that our travel was pretty high even that first year, because we still had the, the conference, but I. I thought we had to do a supplemental our first year. And then the second year, we lowered it, and I know we had to do a supplemental.
Okay, I'm gonna pull up that information just to.
If you can, I. And don't quote me, this is four years ago, but I'm pretty sure we did, but. I would just, if we can give them a little bit of a, you know, a bump, I think it'd be good, and if they don't use it, great. But I would just expect with two new, potentially two new people. It would be quite a bit more. And there was, and, and then in twenty twenty, you know, there were a lot of meetings and, and. That we zoomed, or twenty twenty-one. But we were still coming out of it, twenty twenty, there was nothing. We weren't commissioners yet.
I do think people are still coming out a lot of that stuff, other people are just finally getting back to work during their things. There's a lot of meetings we don't attend, like city councils and things that we need to be showing up at, that we haven't been doing. Community councils.
I think Dan went to Naco, I don't think Jake went to Naco, the February meeting is my new chair.
And Sodder always went.
Sodder, Sodder used to always go to Naco because he served on the board. I never went, because it was a lot of money, and Dan, I think, only went once or twice.
And I chose not to go.
Either way, I don't think we need to get hung up on it, I'm fine with staff making a decision and going from there. Moving on.
Okay, so. Within the last four years, the highest travel budget that I see is a little over twenty-nine thousand. Not much difference, but we could increase it, wanted to.
We didn't use a lot this year, if we kept it status quo or increased it some, it might be a good idea with two new commissioners.
Yeah, with everything back to normal.
I'm fine with status quo, let's.
I'm good with status quo. Thank you.
I have two in the waiting room with Jake's name. I have two in the waiting room with Jake's name, I'm not trusting this, so just so you know.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
I know.
Okay, one.
Put it over to my computer, don't worry, I'm not gonna turn anything on. No inappropriate videos.
Thank you.
Okay, well. Then I think we were just gonna. My understanding, we're gonna leave that at twenty-seven thousand and move on. Then next up will be non-departmental. While she's shuffling through papers, I could speak to a couple of things in here. There are times that the board has me use non-departmental for things such as placeholders. Within the last few years, the Board of County Commissioners has transitioned. From budgeting any potential cost of living adjustments outside of the union. Departments and offices. In, in putting them in a placeholder and non-departmental, this allows us to utilize. This allows us, um, to utilize unfilled positions within departments, um, essentially budgeting a vacancy rate without actually going through the motion of a vacancy rate. Um, and we've already played with that number, reducing it down to two forty. In the 2024 budget, there was also a placeholder for insurance as we were transitioned to pay for general fund insurance this year out, out of, um, a non-departmental, um, budget line item. I believe that in the 2025 budget, um, the board has agreed to move that payment with the other countywide, um, types of insurances that get paid out of the auditor's non-departmental. Um, so it's budgeted there in the 2025 budget and that's where it will be budgeted going forward. Um, it is my plan in this last supplemental to do the transfers to move this placeholder. And any payments made for that to the auditor's non-departmental. So in future years, we're comparing apples to apples. I'll do the work, I promise. Is she giving me the side eye?
Surprise.
Go for it.
Okay. All right. And then, um, so I've got the professional services. Let's see, let me go down the line items here. The professional services staying the same. Um, legal, keeping that at the same budget line item. Then fleet operating supplies. So that one is, is, I mean, basically I kept it at that because we did use it for, um, with the operating supplies for cleaning and stuff like that. Um, now repairs and maintenance. I brought it down for the, it was 2024 was eight thousand, so I bought it down to five thousand, so knocking three thousand off of that. And also with the, um, fleet miscellaneous seventy-five hundred, I bought that down to two thousand. Um, being a fifty-five hundred dollar savings.
And this is, the fleet number, the fleet is new, fairly new, um, within the last few years. And so last year, um, the budget was adjusted minimally, um, to try and find where that sweet spot, that sweet need spot, I guess, um, for the fleet will be. And so it looks like we're still looking for that. And with, um, probably one or two more years, we'll be able to really project that number more clearly.
Yeah, and everything else, um, we've kept the same with the payments to claimants and then, um, the taxes and operating assessments for the county-owned property. Um, and then we have the Water Conservancy Board still staying the same. Now, the, um, the election reserve and the victim witness, I don't budget for that. I don't know.
Those are just transfer out needs depending on the, the year and what's going on and what the, a lot of times it, it will be like, um, I believe the election one had something to do with the grant or I can't quite remember. Um, but if there was any amount used or budgeted in prior, in the prior two years, current year and prior year, then it will show up on this report. If nothing, it will eventually fall off once nothing, no activity has been done.
Yes, that's for commissioners. Um, now left board is, is basically just the office supplies and communications being, uh, you know, anything mailed out. I know that for this next year, we're going to add the, um, the medical, am I correct?
Correct. I'm doing it right now.
Should be moved.
Mm-hmm.
I think we are ready to move those bars numbers, whatever.
The left ones?
So this just will streamline everything when, uh, they submit, let, when left one, um, participants submit for medical reimbursement and also their medical that's paid monthly. That will go into that or come from that, excuse me.
Currently, can you maybe speak more to like how the left board functions and for?
Basically with the left board, it is for, uh, retired, it was a program, it was for retired firefighters and, um, a sheriff or, um, police, law enforcement, thank you. And, uh, it, it was, there's, I don't believe that there's very many left that were participants in that left one. Um, it's kind of like the PERS one. And so it, uh, what it pays for, it pays for their, um, I believe it's their medical, um, insurance, I believe. Yeah, their life insurance. Prescriptions. Yeah, doctor visits. So that's, it's reimbursable. So what they do is they, they provide us with the receipts and then we reimburse.
Um, it, it can even long-term care.
Yes.
Um, about long-term care.
And, oh, at this point in time, yes, it's a, um, a lot of long-term care. And, um, a, a lot of the trouble with this and, and why we proposed putting that from the patrols budget, um, to the left board is the constant effort and work that has to be done in the clerk's office, um, reaching out to family members and, um, left one retirees to ensure that receipts are being turned in, um, timely. I believe that we, we just got a packet of receipts all from 2023 for reimbursement. So, um, this should streamline that and so that they can just handle it directly since they would be the first ones to get all the information anyway.
Left board also has to approve.
The, yes, the, the, uh, Chair and Vice Chair of the Board, yes.
So then we have historic preservation and that one is basically it, uh, the money comes from a, a small portion of the, I believe it's the recording fees. And so we've got, we usually top it off at five thousand. And then, uh, we have the advertisement for all the different entities, the different historical entities like museums and, uh, I believe, I'm trying to think if there's any other, other than the museums really that, yeah, just basically the museums that, um, apply for those grants.
Oh, that's cool.
So public defense, those are, um, of course necessary. I did up, uh, East District Court by five thousand. Uh, just to kind of keep it up with West District Court, it seems that, uh, for 2024, their estimated amounts will be a little bit higher. So that way it, it just kind of evens us out.
Just to add, add to that, um, this would, this would be one of those unfunded mandates that, that we have to provide, um, and within the general fund. Something we have no control over.
Is our current contract with our indigent defense attorneys a two-year contract or going back?
Yes, it's here.
Next year is already unknown.
Yes, that's why it was easier to, to, um, oh, to, uh, budget.
So 2026 would be under negotiate, contract negotiations again?
Yes.
Okay.
So flood control, we don't have anything budgeted in there. That's just, that's, uh.
And flood control is not what it sounds like, um, is and off the cuff here, so Greg might have to help me out. Um, but it is revenue we receive, federal revenue we receive for the property that is underwater due to the dams. Yeah. Along the river. So it, it actually can be, um, general purpose dollars if, if needed, um, because there, because Elisa doesn't have any, um, expense out of that, there's a anticipated, um, investment interest as well as, um, federal lease payment, um, all going to fund balance.
And currently we've got this for landfill gas improvement. Currently we've got, uh, four, actually, yeah, three, no, four, sorry, um, for 2024. And then one for 2025, but that one I believe does not meet the criteria, um, or the conditions necessary. So, um, and that was, uh, was it line, line item four seventy-eight?
Yeah, the.
Yes.
Yeah. Dallasport.
Uh-huh. So that being that it doesn't make that criteria, I don't know if we need to take that off or what I need to do.
Well, it's approved.
Wait, wait a second. Dalsport wastewater is different than the, the Dalsport Water District one for, so let's be, let's be clear, there, there's two different ones. One of them had conditions and that was for the water district one for the well. The wastewater one did not have conditions on it.
Is there one for the wastewater? I didn't think there was.
I didn't either, but I can look. I didn't think there was for wastewater.
Yeah, I didn't think there was one for the wastewater, Jake.
Well, the bars number that you budgeted on i- is Dalsport waste.
Is Dalsport.
It says wastewater.
So.
Maybe that's where he's getting it.
This is going back in my memory banks, speaking when I probably shouldn't, but, uh, I thought we did, didn't we do two hundred and fifty to Dalsport wastewater and two hundred and fifty to Goldendale wastewater? Uh, we did the Dalsport one a couple of years ago and until it gets used, it just keeps getting put back on.
Okay. And I wasn't here then, so I didn't remember.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So let's, uh, let, Elise, if you would look back into those, uh, because this is going back a while and, or maybe just talk to Jeff Hunter because it was for one of the clarifiers, I believe, is what we'd done.
Uh, yes, you are correct.
But let's double check that we didn't actually do it and already expend the funds and we're not just putting it back on there. So I just, I want to make sure this is all, this is all double and triple check because these are a lot of dollars.
Okay. So then we are at cumulative reserve, um, which that's what I kind of, I kind of shared that budget with a few other people. Um, basically, uh, economic development, that one is just, but basically for salaries, I believe.
It's the point oh nine dollars.
The point oh nine dollars, sorry. Um, and then with the, um, airport projects, uh, that is what we, we share half of that with the city of the Dells. And that's basically for the, um, manager salary. Um, we've got the wall gap on there. They hadn't asked for twenty thousand for 2025. And then with the professional services contracts, I just left that at ten thousand.
And what is a professional services contract? Was that what we would use in budget for the Water Conservancy Board?
No, that looks like that's budgeted in the non-departmental.
Yeah, that's budgeted, non-departmental.
So non-departmental, then it comes out of general fund?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So we had a previous conversation and I believe Dan was part of that. And the question was, is should we take the, uh, airport and log app, uh, and whatever this professional services is and take it out of cumulative reserve? And then just not put the money into cumulative reserves? So we're not just booking it in and then booking it out?
So it doesn't, are you, so it doesn't out, uh, reimbursing our savings?
So, so we're, we were putting money into cumulative reserves each year, um, as a directive, but then we put it in, but then we take it straight out for the airport and log app. And the question is, is rather than having an automatic money that gets put in, let's just pull these out of cumulative reserve and just put them into non-departmental. And then you don't have to do that, that movement in. And then with the money that we do have a policy on for money that goes into the emergency reserve, which I'm fully in favor of that policy. What we can do is we can just move cumulative reserves that's, that's just sitting there and then move it into the emergency side of it, which should just be an accounting, internal accounting. It doesn't need to go through the full budget. I would think.
So I believe that it was, it's that these types of projects were, um, designed out of cumulative reserve due to the, the reason that cumulative reserve was established. And I'm trying to search for that resolution right now, um, so I can just read it. Unless Mr. Ireg remembers that resolution because I believe he signed it. Um, essentially.
Don't have me now.
Um, cumulative reserve was, and I'm paraphrasing, um, established to, for the, uh, future needs of, of the county. Um, and any community action projects have historically come out of cumulative reserve. Um, that professional service contract line was one that the commissioners used when they had, when they decided to do the fifty thousand dollars. Um, potential grant per district, commissioner district. So that's where that was housed. I, I don't know what that ten thousand is for that's currently in there. Um, but essentially that's, that's why it's come out of cumulative reserve. It's, it's those, um, programs that the board in the current year wants to support. Um, that wall gap, um, twenty thousand dollar ask is for the youth center. And the board, this board and prior boards have, um, agreed to continue to support that up until now. Um, so that, that's the back history and, and as to why it's been built into one twenty-five.
So I guess all I'm saying is for me, logically, it would be cleaner if it's in non-departmental rather than, uh, coming out of cumulative reserves. What you would do is do a transfer for a transfer out from cumulative reserves into non-departmental to pay for it if you need to. Otherwise, it just comes out of the general fund. Um, for the airport and the wall gap, we do those every year. We've done them. And even one of them has an agreement in place. So coming out of cumulative reserve just doesn't make sense when we, you know, we put money straight into it each year just to pull it right back out.
Well, because I think, I think what the this board views it differently than what it was, the purpose of its establishment. Because we, we're viewing it strictly like a savings account. Um, and, and I think the originating purpose was to really be able to, one, deal with emergencies should they arise, but two, to be able to support programs that come up throughout the year. So, so statement from the board.
The way I read it though, is it's primarily for those community projects that are like one-time events, one-time funding. That's the way I read.
Correct.
And so when we don't do it as a one-time thing, we do it every year and it's pretty much built into it. I don't think pulling out a community reserve makes the most sense. But I mean, since we're updating everything and cleaning everything up and updating our financial system, to me, it would make more sense to, to do it the, you know, the other way. Um, I will defer to, you know, the board and finance, but it just, to me, logically, it just makes sense to put it somewhere else.
I hear you.
My only thing is I want to make sure we don't have a disruption in a contract that we have. My only thing is I want to make sure we don't have a disruption in a contract that we have or. You know, someone that's already planned it for their budget because we do it year to year. Um.
Well, I think that's probably a um. I I'm understanding where Commissioner Anderson is coming from now and.
Put it over there.
And that would be really good discussion, I think, for the finance committee, um who, you know. For the most part is the. The people who are working through the ERP transition and doing all the cleanup in the system.
So Jen, can you explain uh non-departmental then uh why we would have like the money for? The that comes through every year that that's a grant, it just like the grant to the um. Uh walk app is uh for the youth center for the grant that we have that. Doesn't get used most years, but still can get used for the Water Conservancy Board.
I wish I could. I honestly thought that that was coming out of cumulative reserve. So I I was shocked and surprised this morning when I saw in the non-departmental budget, I'm being honest. Um. So I I don't know. I'd have to probably go back and see if I can find anything in my predecessors' notes, um. But nothing that I've scanned. So far.
So is is not, I mean, non-departmental isn't our cumulative reserve fund. It's what you're gonna spend on things that that kind of don't fit, that are orphans other places, right? So. So having the Water Conservancy Board plus the Youth Center plus the airport in non-departmental. Um could make a little bit more sense based on how we're using and what we do with cumulative reserves.
It could.
But that would just be whatever Lori, if you want to do it or not, or if we want to wait for Dan. And I know Dan's gonna want to talk about the money that goes to the Water Conservancy Board. Um and I, Elisa, do you know, did they take that money last year?
Just last year, yeah, they did.
Not all of it.
Not all of it, though.
Like a thousand dollars, little over a thousand, I think, is all that they used for administrative purposes, I think.
Yeah, that's.
So so they. That they spent a thousand dollars. Did they take the grant, though? The grant's always been for ten thousand eight hundred.
Um.
No, I think it stayed in our accounts, didn't it?
They have to submit an invoice in order to get paid. It's not.
It's reimbursement.
Yeah, and they haven't submitted one.
Yeah.
Oh, I guess things aren't changing if you guys, because before it had its own checking account and so once about every four years, they would ask for the ten thousand dollars. It was budgeted every year, but they'd only take it when the account got down to like fifteen hundred dollars.
The fact that they had their own account is is irrelevant. And they have to submit an invoice to us asking us for the money.
Right.
Just get it because it's budgeted, so they.
Right, so they did submit it last year, though.
They have more often than not not asked for the money.
Yeah.
More often than not, not.
Correct. They usually don't.
Ask. Okay, that's what I was saying, like, once every four years, they ask for it, but they didn't ask for it last year. It was budgeted this year. Um, and now that now that they're under. Technically, they got rid of the checking account, so it's through you guys now. Do we know how much money's in that account?
Not on my head.
So did I? I was pulling up um to information from last year to answer your question. Um if they utilized it last year and last year they were reimbursed twelve thousand five hundred forty-four dollars and fifty cents.
Oh.
So they took.
They only had a ten thousand eight hundred dollar budget.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if it was carryover approved or what.
I I think that's probably because the money that was in the account and then it got. Transferred out of the actual checking account to you guys, right? Since you guys made the change at the beginning of the year.
Yeah, what fund are they, Jen?
I guess, why don't we look into it? Why don't why doesn't Finance Committee look into it? What all I guess I'm saying is is if. There's money in that account um for them. Uh, we probably don't need to take it and budget it this year. I just, I'm I'm guessing that Commissioner Christopher, based on what he's been saying, is not gonna want us to to. Put that in the budget. And I, what I'm saying is I can agree with that as long as they have money in their account to cover their costs.
Okay, we can look at it at Finance Committee, Jen.
They have just under a thousand dollars in their bank.
Oh, did you hear that? Under.
No, how much?
Thirty.
Just under thirty thousand.
In their account?
Yes.
Uh, okay, well, then I would, uh, I guess, uh, I would make the uh the that we don't budget for that ten thousand eight hundred to go in their account this year.
That's.
Are you good with?
Second, yes. I'm good with.
All right, we just saved ten thousand. We only got another million to go.
Okay, um. A VRNR is um. Pretty straightforward. Um, the expense side of VRNR is um the. Potential vehicle purchases um that have been requested through phase one. Um, the revenue side of that is all the transfers in. Um. And with the vehicle purchases, as you know, but just a reminder that the sheriff um vehicle purchases is a set amount, um depending on the. The group that's being purchased that year. It's a five-year rotation. So this year, there are some additional vehicles um requested to be purchased. I believe. One is code compliance.
Code compliance is for.
I believe so. And then I believe the other one is building, so I'm I'm. But that was before the last conversations with Lynn, so I will have, will probably have to circle back around and make sure that. That could be reduced. But again, the money is already sitting there in in the fund. It's um. It's not money being pulled from other areas. The Rental Rates Act, it acts as a um. Although it's a five hundred fund, it's reported as managerial fund. We treat it like a savings account. We put in a rental rate every year for each vehicle um to anticipate the purchase of a new vehicle. When it reaches a certain set of um parameters.
And then now we don't, we don't pay insurance on it any longer. We have, since we're in the risk pool.
Okay. And that pretty much wraps up. The commissioner's budgets.
CC.
At least now we can say we took more time on the commissioners than we did on anything else.
Heather says she wins that award since hers took two hours.
She went first, that doesn't count.
The sacrificial lamb. Okay, well, next up would be HR and Administrative Services. Perfect. Randy's gonna go first.
I think he was sleeping back there.
I mean, I can go first if we want to, but. Now, as Randy gets up there, I I want to remind the. Um, the board and viewers that Randy and myself fall into the same budget. We share a budget very similar to co-compliance and buildings. Building inspection. Um, our subdepartments. We don't necessarily have a subdepartment identifying us, but our bars numbers um separate us. So in the sheets, you will see that I've separated it just for mine and his sanity. Um. But when you look at a budget report, it's a as a whole.
Upgrade to the new Kianta.
Didn't bother me none, but.
Um, yeah, I I guess you've seen my budget. What questions do you have?
Jake, I have none.
I have none, uh because if I got in, we would go and.
Take the mic.
Who won the, who won the bet?
I refuse to answer that. It might incriminate me.
Run.
I think I need. No, I uh, I think we just, we're gonna have to continue to to keep a close watch on uh the IT services as we move forward. The costs continue to rise and it's something that. Um, you know, our grants and everything, it's such a huge overhead expense. Uh I think Randy's doing a a bang-up job. Um, I know we're spending a lot of money right now on projects, but um these are the necessary things we have to do to to keep things operating when. The system goes down for a day and two hundred and fifty-five people can't do their jobs. Um, the loss is so much greater than the cost of just. Fighting the bullet in the first place. Um, I say that with the reservations that I still think that these uh, how much we pay for services is ridiculous. But that's no fault of these staff. That's just the way programs work.
And if I could piggyback off of what Commissioner Anderson had just said, um, the way of the world since COVID. Uh, has transitioned everything. I mean, we were already on that path of everything going electronic. It has just forced local governments to have to get there. Um, and so when we think of IT, we really need to be thinking about that as our internal infrastructure. Um, it is now no different than a public road.
I to, yeah, to follow up what you said is I see. I see IT in the same light as facilities. We need, we need good, safe facilities. We need IT in in the same manner.
Absolutely. It it is infrastructure um at this. With this day and age. And critical infrastructure. The only thing that I would also add and just let the commissioners know, this budget will likely increase. Um, there's just a couple of things that we, Randy and I need to tie out um. Off the top of my head, also with Alisa and making sure her software um subscription is is in this budget, um because IT's. Expenses are. Really not for IT other than the payroll. Um, the rest of it is for the entire county's um. Needs, whether that is um equipment, software.
Yes.
And so on.
Hi, Casey.
Do I get to do that, too? No question?
Yes.
Yep.
The goal for the day. Yeah, there are, um, there aren't many changes for HR. The biggest one would probably just be. Moving some services from um forty-one hundred to forty-nine hundred, and that was per the auditors and that is for NeoGov. And that is, that is my biggest change that we have in there. So any questions?
Mister Anderson?
I was trying to scroll down, but I can't do it when you.
He's trying.
Jenny made a scroll. There you go.
Yeah, I didn't have my my big book with me, so I wanted to double check. No, I'm good with everything on there. I think you did a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Run while you can, Rob.
You're going, you weren't done.
As as for my budget, um, I. I have budgeted um travel and training. Um. The majority of my my training is the GF O A Annual Conference. I believe next year is in Washington DC. Um, I had budgeted. High last year, not knowing what my final expenses would come in um for. The Orlando Conference, um so I reduced it a little bit because I came in significantly under under budget.
What month is your conference?
Uh, I think it's June.
It's five.
I also reorganized the lines on where I allocated the budget. Because I think I just dumped the majority of it in trout in training last year, so. Any questions?
No, I just wanted to be on the record that this is something that we have agreed to do, um and it's good uh training and it's part of that professional development and. I just want to say I think we're getting our money's worth out of the training that you're going to, Jen. I you've done a great job with the budget.
Thank you. And Heather says she wholeheartedly supports that statement. I would like that on record.
And I think Greg was not. I think Greg was not.
Let the record show then.
No, we should not. Um, the other. The other um budget that I I have listed under Administrative Services, just because. The desk sits in the HR office and it really doesn't have a home is the Civil Service Commission. Um. That budget has just been consistently the same year over year, but. The person administering the test is no longer an employee um and just. And gets has a professional services contract. And so there are things like office supplies and. And rents and leases and trading and whatnot. That's not actually being utilized.
And in twenty twenty-five, uh civil service will only apply to the patrol side, so we should see um maybe a a. A lower cost and we're uh working with civil service to uh implement new testing. And so there may be a a little more cost for those tests, but the testing company will um do all the grading of the tests and all that stuff, so we're gonna try and kind of. Uh automate some of that with the with the support of civil service. So that could go down in the future when it only applies to the patrol side of the sheriff's office.
At this point in time. Well, let's see, in twenty twenty-four. Um, because they're in HR, they're not receiving any rents and leases charges, um but they have two thousand dollars budgeted there. I would imagine we could probably reduce that to zero. If the board is in favor of that.
Or they could pay HR.
So I'll take them, take the money.
Okay, um. Training and travel. They have eight fifty budgeted.
You know what? The transition of um. Corrections out of civil service and the introduction of the new software, it's just hard to.
Maybe leave that then.
The new testing company, it's just hard to anticipate. It may come down. I haven't had an in-depth discussion with them yet. Uh I know the board is um. Considering allowing us to use the new testing service. I'm not sure the the cost of the new testing versus what we do now, so. You could change it, but we may have to. Do a supplemental if we find it's more expensive. Or they will.
Why don't we leave it all alone until you get get something and if we need to update it, let's update it, but I'm fine with staff updating it based on what what happens. Not that much money.
Okay, yeah, then we will. We will just leave the rest of it as is. Okay. And I told, so if there's no more questions, then I'll try and get rid um Scott down here.
I don't have anything on for Scott's, if he needs to, Lori, do you? I know he's not feeling well.
I do not need their first God, I don't have.
Okay, okay, um, no, it's fine.
You've actually added to his budget.
Yeah, pretty significantly.
Yes.
Where are we going from here?
I'm just sending Scott an instant message.
At least make him sit in his seat.
No, we just get another weekly report.
He's showing up his favorite.
Thank you, Casey.
All right, Jen, what are we down to? What's our final number, since we saved a whole $10,000?
Looks like we're down to 1-6.
Wait, we went back up, I thought we were well below 1-5.
Uh, there was a, an accounting oversight in there, so it jumped up to 1-8, now we're back down to 1-6.
What was that on, on?
Um, it was pulling more ARPA dollars into the general fund than expending. So therefore the difference was adding to the pool of revenue to offset.
Sounds better, we can, you've stayed it in euros. We're balanced in euros. Sorry, Jake.
Har har har.
Jen can figure it out, she can do it.
I can do it.
Okay, Jen, do you have, do you have an expectation on this year's budget at the, the end of the year? If everything goes as planned with the supplemental as you're expecting it? How far under budget do we think we would end up being? Already will we have not have spent?
Um, well, we won't be under budget in the general fund, totally that much. I don't, I don't know overall yet.
Okay, uh, next question on this 1-6. Uh, did we do a transfer in for the dollars from cumulative reserve to cover the corner? Did we add that to the cumulative reserve transfer in?
Yes. About 190.
So what we, so we have two things then, we've got 1.6. Uh, we started at 2.5, right? So we cut almost a million out, maybe 900,000. Um, I guess if this is where we're gonna end up, my crystal ball feeling is, uh, the way I'd like to see it type of budgeted is using kind of a third, a third, a third, we cut a third out of the budget, we can use a third from cumulative reserve and we can use a third from cash on hand. Um, and that's something that, that we can market to the public, knowing that uh, this is gonna be something that, that the future boards are gonna have to deal with. And with the goal that, um, at these numbers that are more accurate, I think than this year's number, the supplementals will hopefully be less. Uh, because some of the stuff in the sheriff's department should have been fixed. Um, we also didn't budget the revenues on the jail side correct, that could be quite significant.
They could change, yes.
Yes, and so of that, we're talking potentially a $2 million grant. So we could swing that maybe a million dollars if we get it halfway through the year. And that would end up using up all the money that we would have had to transfer over in cumulative reserves.
Yeah, I think the grant's 2.2, yes.
We'll spend it all, you know, at one time, if you get it halfway through the year.
Right.
So, but if you could spend a million of it, um, that would go a long ways. And then what we'd really be saying is, is we're using, uh, 800,000 from, uh, cash, which, uh, makes a lot of sense when we know the issues that we have in the EMS, or not EMS, Dispatch 911 and Sheriff's Department that we're, that a future board's gonna have to deal with. Um, whether that, and it's gonna have to come on the revenue side, it's just all there is to it.
No, it sounds reasonable.
I mean, if you'd like, it could be unreasonable.
No, no, it's been a good day.
Okay, you better brought gummy bears.
Came down.
I'll eat your gummy bears, Jake, for you, just.
Uh, hey, we're not allowed to accept gifts, remember? His extortion is not gonna work on me.
Oh, look at that.
Exotic fruit.
Thank you, Scott.
Upped your game a little bit there.
I love them.
Now he's really working it.
He's really pandering.
He's been into the top slot, ain't he?
Thank you.
Scott, the only thing I can say is, is I'd like you to go find another grant. The first one only took you a couple of months to go find, and go find another one to pay for some of the rest of your costs. Okay, we'll, we'll do that. All right, that's my only comment I had.
This is our, my first one, so I'm not sure what, um, we're looking forward. Do you want me to just go into a little overview of our, the department and try to stick to budget type issues?
Okay.
So, just some highlights from 2024. I think one of the most important things is, um, I feel like we've solidified the department for the foreseeable future. After some, some major changes, I started March, as you know, we lost Denise and a lot of the experience that she brought to us. Um, but Debbie and Rebecca both are just incredibly strong team members who continue to step up in new ways all the time. And I've seen that in the short time I've been here. Lori, as you know, has moved into the senior planner role, which is really critical, I think, for our department moving forward. And then Rachel, of course, started one month ago and she's already, um, just doing, doing outstanding and a great fit for our department. And then, of course, we got hired Evan, and he's only been here two weeks, but he's substantially increased our capacity to deal with the pretty heavy load of long-range prod, planning projects and needed code updates that we're well behind on. Um, one of the things that we're working toward is a, a balance of workload. We are extremely busy, I don't think of us as too busy, though. The problem is that we're behind and we've been behind since I got here and we've been trying to catch up. But we're getting there and I think once we get there, the load we have is a very busy load, but we want to be busy. You know, you don't want to be slow. So I think it's just right, it's just a matter of adjusting some things. Example, how busy we are pre-sub, uh, pre-submission meetings in 2023, we had 96 the whole year. To date, we have 104, so we're well beyond pre-sub, so a lot of activity going on. Applications, 2023, we had 90, as of today, we have 90. So we're already the number we had last year with two and a half months left to go. Uh, we have made significant progress in multiple applications that predated the Lori Anderson directorship. You know, well, well past her, beyond when she took over for a while. And, and we're glad to be catching up on some of those. And we've made critical, uh, some significant progress on the critical areas ordinance, as you know, can, continue to move forward in that. And that's important because there's so many other things coming up, we need to get that out of the way. We're also working hard to make improvements to staff reports, presentations to our, our various boards and stronger findings. That's something that we've really focused on through training and, uh, working together to improve some of our documents, especially to make them ready for appeals and able, with, able to withstand appeals better. A few budget notes, the main changes to the expenditures, there's not much. Uh, then the biggest is having Evan on board, which his position is fully funded, at least for the first year and a half with grants. Um, possibly beyond that, uh, Lori being the senior planner, that's a change. And then I asked for room in the budget for potential mid, a potential mid-year promotion. Um, the other thing that was a change, but it doesn't have an impact, all the other items, I think we tried to keep pretty flat. But we had a budget, an item called miscellaneous that had 3,000 in it and has for the past several years. We have training, which has 500 in it. Training's very important to me and, and the op, I would like the opportunity for each of our team members that who want to, to be able to go to do training out of the area, like go, actually go physically to a training. So I propose to swap those, that $3,000 is almost never used, it's used to cover something like $150, um, oh, subscription to a, a membership, and that's all, the rest just sits there. So my proposal is to switch those numbers, make it 500 miscellaneous, 3,000 training. Um, knowing it's, the budget's tight, if we have to limit that and say only one person per year is gonna go to training for a while, um, we're fine with that. So if we need to reduce that number, I'd like to keep placeholder that we'd like to get it back up there. Um, but if we need to reduce that number, I would certainly understand. Otherwise, we didn't really see much we could cut. It's mostly supplies and things that are just kind of what they are, and, you know, printer fees, that type of thing. Uh, grant revenue coming in, as you know, um, we have the $350,000 clean energy grant. Um, 246,000 of that is guaranteed as long as we do the work, because that's, that's what we front-loaded it through June of next year. The remaining 104,000 will be dependent on, um, ballot measures that have been, been put out there, not going through. I think there's at least three that would take away the funding for the second year. Uh, if it does, um, we're still covered for Evan's position because of the $75,000 grant that we'll be getting in July for continued planning efforts from the state, followed by another 75,000 the next year. So we're well covered in that area, it'd just be better if we had the extra 104,000, they'd just extend us even further. Uh, fee schedule, something that I'm gonna be bringing to you related to the budget, as some part, when I bring to you, I'd ask that we, we look at, because I think we need to look at some of our fees. We've had some projects that have taken significantly more staff time than anticipated. Uh, some of the CIPAs are much more complex than their flat fee covers, and I think we need to take some of that into account when, depending on the project, so we can do a thorough job. Uh, we also need to clarify the consultant role, we have the ability in our fee schedule now to use a consultant. I'd like to make it a little more upfront as to when consultants use, so applicants, when they see our fee schedule, will know, okay, a consultant will be used for these applications. And that's, um, I want to distinguish that from the grant-funded projects, because we're not using consultants for that. This is for highly complex projects that we would, uh, charge the applicant the full cost of the consultant for. So if we use a consultant, we'll get paid for the consultant, and so there, there's no, no cost, just it's, you bring in the money that you, you put out. Um, and then on the fee schedule, I would like to look at some other items, there's, there's a lot of things that we work, do work for that we don't get paid for, and some that I think 100% fine. Pre-submission meetings, I think are as beneficial to the department as they are to applicants. Um, this is something that helps us be prepared, zoning determinations, that's a service to the public. But there are some other things we do, especially things like, uh, boundary land adjustments or land divisions by deed, where we have to do quite a bit of research on, on the backend and there's no fee and, and no way to re, um, reimburse us for our costs. So there's a few things I'd like to look at with you on fee schedules. I'll go into a few priorities for 2025. Of course, one of the most pressing is just to meet the grant requirements by the end of June, uh, on the comp plan and the solar projects ordinance. And the focus is meeting them, not necessarily having the end product, because this is a very condensed timeframe. So my goal is to have something on paper that is, will be what we need to then work the rest of the year to make it what we really want it to be, but at least to get the bare bones, all the main information down. So that's our, our main priority, is making sure we can meet those, the grants, training I mentioned is a priority. Um, we're also looking to approve a lot of internal processes, some working with other, other departments that have, and our discussions have gone very well. And to, um, improve some of our processes, but also to establish some internal timeframes. As a non-GMA county, we're not bound by some of the rules regarding certain time li, time limits for applications. And some have really dragged on months beyond where we'd like them to, and it's just because of staffing. But I'd like to get to a point when we try to hold ourselves to our internal dates that are similar, at least to the ones that GMA counties hold themselves to or required to. Um, like that we are gonna work to establish procedure for utilizing our consultant efficiently. We have 25,000, our current budget for the consultant services, I think I increased that request this time. But again, that's if we, that also includes, um, on the other side, where we increase the revenue expectation, because if we spend 50,000 on consultant, we'll get $50,000 in fees from applicants for those. But we'd like to establish our procedures so that we can, can utilize them well. And with Lori in her role as a senior planner, I think she can be, um, an important, um, key to, to coordinating that work. We're also looking at diversifying tasks, I mentioned this to you before, so that the, the current model is that every department sort of has their own things they do. I'd like to spread that out more, because when you're just focused on one thing, it can pile up and, um, I don't think it's the best customer service. And also, um, it hurts the department when only one person knows how to do certain aspects. So with the staff as we have it, we're starting to work on diversifying things, that's only gonna improve as we get more experience. We'd like to, this will be later in the year, because, uh, for next year, we need to get through our grants first. But we will want to figure out with the board, what are the next priorities? There's so many things that need to be fixed or updated. We want to start looking at our various long-range plans and see what's next or what code changes need to be made, what are the most critical, um, items? What are easy ones we could do quick, what are longer ones that we need to put into a schedule? Um, I had, we want to continue to improve the SEPA review process and the public involvement aspect of that, because we see some real holes in that process. And then we're, we're looking, um, hard, I saw an email this morning, our public notice and especially use of our website, information provided. Lori's done some great things, especially through, um, the Monroe-Wilson Rezone and, and the demand from the public for information, helped us to see some holes in our website and holes in our public outreach that we can improve on. And we'd like to really get, working on our website to make it more user-friendly for the public. Um, and then the one thing that I've just had, not had much time to do, because we've been so busy, but to improve relationships with state agencies or build relationships in other jurisdictions, other counties and other staff. So those are some of the priorities for next year, a lot of them have to do reflected with the budget. Um, there's not a lot, I don't think, to say on the budget itself, unless you have questions. I think the high, main things are change in salaries, the grant funding, and then that, that small shift toward training over miscellaneous.
Yeah, I have no questions and, um, good choice on the shift. Training's always valuable, so good catch on that.
And, and we are finding a lot of free training or training that's at $50 or less, and we've been taking advantage of that when we can.
And I like what you're doing with your cross-training.
Yeah, I think that's important, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, Scott sets the bar, I'm telling you. You're in trouble now.
Start over, Scott. I'm kidding. So, the only, the only question I have is, is, um, reimbursement and agreements. So do we have, is the reimbursement agreement in place with EFSEC for the Carriager project? And have we billed them?
Nope. But I just saw an email about it yesterday, um, so I, I'm gonna claim ignorance on that, because I saw the email and, uh, the question mark above my head.
So that, and, and so I had a chance to talk with Jeff, but I didn't have a chance to talk with you on how many hours staff has spent on that project? And how much, in essence, are we subsidizing that project? Because everybody else has to pay, but right now, they're not having to pay. Uh, which I thought was the whole darn reason we got away from doing that. Uh, and now everybody pays for everything, uh, but yet the one project that everybody wants to pay isn't paying, so.
And, and you're, sorry.
And I just wanna, I want us to get to the bottom of this and get forward, so we can get reimbursed for the work that all of our departments are doing with regards to this project, acknowledging that getting reimbursed for us reviewing it in no way um, is saying we support a project, it's saying we're doing our due diligence.
Well, we'll have to look at that, Scott, I have a copy of it. And then we could have a board discussion. Cause I want to ensure that that is reimbursement for pre. Cause I want to ensure that that is reimbursement for pre-review, because they don't have their application yet. It's not an approved application, so I want to see where that funding actually kicks in at.
It only, it's one, once you start, once you sign the agreement, like all reimbursement agreements. Unless you put in that contract that it's, you can, you can bill for the time that you've already done. But most government agreements don't allow for that language, at least with the state. Very few do.
Because it comes down to how much work do we have before EFSEC is done with their review? And sign and approves their application. Is there actual work?
And that's, that's my question that I want to, and doesn't necessarily have to be answered here, but I want to look into is what work is there? Cause I, I mean, I have done no work since I started on character. There's, there's been no role for me at this point. I don't know if we're talking about, um, the.
That's a, that's a great answer to the question is if, if you haven't reviewed any of the, uh, EFSEC, uh, updates or anything else. And you're not reading all the documents and keeping up on it, then, um, that's something that we can't charge for if you're not doing.
Oh, well, I am doing that. I wasn't considering that doing work, though. I mean, it's.
That is absolutely doing work.
Okay, okay, so, so even that, just simply monitoring an EFSEC case?
Absolutely, that's part of the agreement, or at least the, the, uh, one that we had.
Okay. I'll look into that and we can work on that.
Draft, I meant, not that we had. Anyways, you, you had a great update, um, everything makes sense, it's all logical. Um, I don't think we want to, to cut that, uh, that budget, um, thank you for offering. But I think with, uh, where you're at with a brand new employee, uh, and also with, uh, a, a new long range planner, we're going to need it.
Doing great.
Okay, well, thank you.
Yeah, and I thank you for explaining us your whole next year and what you're doing with the money.
Oh, that's awesome. All right, great. And I don't know, Jen, um, we did our budget narrative quite some time ago. And it's a lot's changed since then, and this, this is quite a bit different than what the narrative says. Do we have an opportunity to update that or is it just what it was when we submitted?
Yeah, you can absolutely send me another one that would.
Is there a deadline when you need that?
No, not at this point in time. Um, well, I say no, but we have some time, um. I don't foresee. Really getting anything to the board before the December, the first Tuesday or first Monday of December. So, um, that's the statutory public hearing time. So. Anytime before that.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, everybody. Appreciate all your time.
Yeah. Way to go, Scott.
Oh, you see?
At least Jeff King got us hacked.
Don't forget your bag.
I just want to point out that the, uh, gummy worms seem inspired by real fruit. I'm not sure that.
Inspired.
We'll have, we'll have none of that.
And that pretty much wraps up the day. Uh, we had nothing this afternoon, um. It's awesome. You have a meeting, um, I believe, or. So.
Yeah, that's great. That was a good day. Anything else for you, Mr. Anderson?
Nope, thank you, everyone. Uh, great job with the budget. I'm glad we finally made it through them all. And I look forward to, uh, the recommendations that finance committee comes with, up with on the things that we did discuss. And I look forward to seeing the next, uh, draft.
Great. Do you want to close the meeting? Did he leave?
Uh, do you have, have any, uh, anything that there'll be two commissioners at?
No.
Okay, Madam Chair, I would make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Uh, I'll step down in a second. No discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Bye bye.